Senator and City Council meeting for November the 17th of 2025. If you'll stand for the invocation, then please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Lord, we ask you to look at the homeless and the sick and get them back into society as quickly as possible. Also, we ask you to look at our first responders, our EMTs, our fire, and our police from the standpoint as they watch over us. Also, what we do for the entire community is we do that tonight, not for anyone's particular interest or anyone's particular project. Also, the armed forces individuals that we have locally from the standpoint are watching over us, watch over them as well on the 24/7. And we do all of this in your name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the November meeting. This will be the last November meeting. I have Belinda Nitschke calling, taking the minutes. I have Frank Rickman this evening as our attorney. And Belinda, if you'll go ahead and call the roll, please.
Mr. Barlidge?
Here.
Mr. Messmer?
Here.
Mr. Ruhl?
Here.
Mr. Schreiber?
Here.
Mrs. Spears?
Here.
Dr. Spilly?
Present.
Mr. Thielen?
Here.
We record this evening, and welcome, welcome, everybody. Glad to have everybody. Kind of a mild evening tonight, but we're hitting the end of the holiday season as well. We have always a slot on the agenda for citizens wishing to be heard. That's not on the agenda, and you all don't have to come up at once, but at the same time, you can just discuss the issues when they come forward. If not, we'll just roll on on the agenda that we have this evening. Does anybody want to add or remove or put?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to just add a brief discussion of a couple, maybe, speed zones to look at with Chief, when the time is right.
Well, just make that as kind of unfinished business, Doctor, if you don't mind from the standpoint of...
That is fair. I think it will always probably be unfinished business, right?
It always is because we talk...
It will be moving around, doesn't it?
Somebody will always stop somewhere too fast, right?
Yeah, we talk about it, and of course, at the same time, we can discuss it a little more. I would like to relieve, remove item number two on the APW awards presentation standpoint. We'll do that at the next meeting in December. Some of the plaques and some of the other stuff didn't come in, but we are proud to have our folks, again, getting some awards from the American Public Works Association. So we'll just continue that on as we get them. I do have October the 20th, I'm jumping ahead of ourselves, October the 20th meeting, that's a council meeting, need a motion and a second and any discussions or changes in that, October 20th.
I had a, I think it's a typo. It's in the, where it's discussed about the staff reports and Mr. Ruhl, it says, "Mr. Ruhl asked for an update on Palmer and Dudley Road."
I don't know.
Is that paving Dudley Road? I'm not sure what that meant.
Palmer's the contractor.
Palmer's the contractor.
Palmer was, is a contractor that's doing the environmental reviews, and I think he was asking me, asking for an update, or have they started that yet?
Okay, it just made it sound like it was an intersection.
Do you want me to put contractor?
And then I sent out, because I think you would also ask about how many rideaways we had to do, so I wanted to put that in for you as well.
And yeah, I saw those in those notes this time. Thank you very much.
I'll just add the word contractor.
Yeah. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve a minute.
With the new additions.
With the change, yeah.
I'll second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Ruhl?
Yes.
Mr. Barlidge?
Yes.
Mr. Messmer?
Yes.
Mrs. Spears?
Yes.
Dr. Spilly?
I'm staying.
Mr. Thielen?
Yes.
The minutes for October the 20th, 2025 passes with the corrections that we have made it tonight and noted the corrections. Well, the mayor's up the bat here tonight, but from the standpoint of, we've got a couple of things. We had the mayor's meeting on Saturday and was very pleased to have Senator Tom Massey from Washington, DC, come and visit with us and bring us a little update on what's going on in Washington. Of course, everything was kind of going back to normal as he sat up at the podium and said, "Everything is working well," but no, it's not working well. But at the same time, from the standpoint of, he had some different ideas from the standpoint that it's going to be coming up again in January from the standpoint of on the budget, going to be on resolutions and things of that nature. And so he said, "We may start all over in January with the budget, fiscal budget coming again." He had some plans and he had some thoughts, and the one he mentioned to us all in the meeting room from the standpoint is you have the security people, you have the SNAP programs, you have all the little individual pro social security and things of this nature. He said what he is trying to do and what they're looking at is maybe not looking at the budget itself, but looking at those particular items alone and just voting on those to get those passed so that you don't have the food program stopped, you don't have the police stopped, and the, and the, not really the police, but the military aspect of it stopped. And he said he's going to be introducing and looking into it with other congressmen and representatives as well at the House, which makes really good common sense. So we'll wait and see what happens. Hopefully, they'll come to some consensus and some reasoning and work something out that everybody can work at on the January issue. But again, he brought a number of good points from the standpoint of what's going on in Congress and the Senate and how, kind of how things have progressed for it. But it was a real surprise to us all. He, with the, we hosted it down at the seniors, the government center down in Covington. And it was very pleased to have him and very, very, very came and sat there and he said, "Do you know," he said, "I'd like to hear from the other cities." He said, "I have some other appointments to do on Saturday, but," he said, "if you don't mind, I know that each of the cities go around and talk about their structures and what," and I talked about the Dudley constructions and so forth, the federal money that we need to get and the state money. And he was very, very hospitable about that and very pleasing to everybody and listened to it and had a number of issues. He said, "If you have issues on social security or have passport issues, certainly see his representatives." He works, he's in those particular committees, and he would be more than happy to help you out if you have some issues. So anyway, from the standpoint, that was very, very pleasing to listen to him, and I, that was about the second time that I've seen him in person, but it was pleased to have him come and join us and state for the meeting as well. Also, what was discussed is if you know, and if you haven't been down to the county building, certainly you want to be going down pretty soon. Some areas will not be able to get into, which will be the front parking lot. This, this shows the parking garage that's now built in, down at the Covington, and you just basically go in on the side street, you go into the parking garage, and you walk in the back door of the administration building down there. It's two or three levels. I parked on the first level, so I kind of was just walked right on through. Right now, they're beginning to put on 240 apartments will be on the top of this, of this building, and they'll be renting, and those folks will also be having parking spots within the garage. So there's enough spots, 300 for the administration people that's down there, plus the people that will be in the 240 complex, they will be in this parking garage. So a lot of changes are coming, and they're coming very quickly. And of course, the, the bridge that's across the street from the administration building, that's all going to be covered. That's all going to be enclosed. It's no longer, you have no longer be able access to go under it. They're filling that all in because the, from the standpoint, the state and the federal government went putting in a new road from the standpoint, I guess, of bringing some of the dirt, and they're going to be compiling that underneath all that, building it all up, and it basically saves them thousands and thousands of dollars in the future by doing this because of the structural. It will now be on earth. It won't be on pylons and things that they'll have to go back and work on the concrete and replace the concrete in years to come. So it's an engineering process that's going on. Their front parking lot at the administration building is half the size what it is now because there's the stages, they're going by stages, and we'll see further construction of it coming up in this coming year, '26, '27, '28, '29, and '30. So look, if you take a ride down there and you want to shoot across and get in there, go the back way and go into the, into the parking lot, it's free, you can park and then just go into the, into the building as well. Friday night, the Municipal Government League met for a dinner, and a number of, quite a few of the cities were there, as well as Moon County, Canton County, and Campbell County. The judges were there as well, and Senator McDaniel spoke, and J.D. Chaney from the KLC spoke that evening, or Friday evening, and spoke about from the standpoint collaboration and working together with cities and working with the new, the legislature that's going to be coming up in January as well, from the standpoint of emphasizing home rule from the standpoint that they're staying, that everybody's standing behind that, and from the standpoint, as we discussed earlier, since tax revenues and other things are going to be coming up within the session, it is a short session, so it's going to come up very quickly and fast. But Senator McDaniel is certainly in our favor from the standpoint of individual cities' home rules and supportive as well as the KLC, and it was kind of a pleasure to see them as well on Friday evening. So we're getting ready for the session, and we'll start up very quickly, and everybody needs to keep in mind, and we had a number of state representatives there as well, so they kind of are heeding our, our wishes in some of our discussions that were amongst the cities and the counties as well. So it was a full pack, kind of full pack week here we had, but it was very enjoyable, and I think from the standpoint, we're, we're on the right track from the standpoint with the KLC and the lobbying for us, and of course, our senators and our representatives are felt very strongly in favor of our comments, and certainly would like to see the wishes that we have passed if we have some conflicts in the revenue and some of the other sharing things that are coming up. With that, I'll jump into staff reports. Any questions on Brian? On Belinda's, on the city clerk? Fire with Tom Dickman? General services with Rick? Police with Jimmy? And of course, recreation. Of course, recreation is getting really geared up again for the, we'll discuss it as we go here with the home decorating contests and other things coming forth. So again, on Lucas from the standpoint, getting everything involved and getting involved as well.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, sorry, I couldn't get it out quick enough, just if I could ask Chief real quick?
Which one?
Krines.
Okay, all right.
I, it's really two, two different questions that I wanted to bring up. One is, we have, we have a new driver in our house, so as you go through driver training, do you pay attention to things that your mind kind of auto completes? First of which, and this is, I think, a minor thing, and it's not urgent, but the, not necessarily a, a police chief issue, but more of like a traffic flow issue, is the exit from St. Pius onto Dudley, the left, right, this was a 30-minute debate with my daughter, but the left lane is just a green light when it is actually a green turn because you can't go straight there. And at some point, I was curious if somebody that is more schooled at me than that would look at that and see if it should appropriately be a left green turn arrow. My daughter did not want to pull out because she said, "Those cars have the right of way, I have to yield to them." I said, "No, they actually have a red light."
They have red on that side.
But because of an incident the day before, she was a little skittish. So that was one thing I wanted to bring up. And again, it's minor, but it's one of those things that, for me, I knew they had a red, so I always just went. Second one is getting out of the east side of Dudley, either at Winding Trails, Winterborne, or Wood Run. I know we have, you know, traffic and speed alerts kind of down further where the Dudley curve at Bellmead is, but I'm curious if we have done or if we could look at doing a speed study of folks cresting the hill coming up Dudley, usually in the morning, between 6:45 and 7:15 a.m. From my vantage point, it probably could be a scene out of Dukes of Hazzard sometimes when cars come up so fast, they come over that, that knob on the hill. I will tell you, five days a week, I drive to school in the morning, and at least three out of five days a week, I, I'm tailgated, the cars behind are so close, I can't see their headlights and/or like horns when I pull out. And I'm not an unaggressive driver, but that, you know, when, when there's nobody coming and I pull out, what is that, like an eighth of a mile, and then immediately they're up on me that quick, tells me how fast they probably could be going. On the converse of that, in the afternoon, toward, after 3:00, when cars go towards east on Dudley, towards the stop sign, I imagine the body shops are going to be very busy putting new brakes on cars because it is literally in excess of 35 miles an hour through the flashing yellows, and then it's got to be an immediate stop because they come so fast through there, you know, trying to get home, I'm assuming. So I just didn't know if there was a way to do like a, you know, a two-headed animal, you know, with, with, just with speed or just to see what the average speed is through there, to see if we need to look at maybe putting some flashers, you know, similar to what's near Bellmead. Or, you know, we have it going down Dudley, we have that other turn by Bellmead, but kind of in between, I think there's pretty good head of steam. And this is, I'm an N of one, I get that. Other people have said the same thing, so I thought it might be good to surface it and see what thoughts were on it.
So we used to have a stealth stat, and I'm not sure if the police department has it or if Public Works uses it at this point.
We're getting on the program about that today. So we have, so some of our signs move, like we just move them around. The ones you're talking about, we put in concrete and they're mounted.
Okay.
Doesn't mean we couldn't mount one in that location. So we can take them from other areas. We, we talked today, Rick, that there's some like over off of Maple Lane, somewhere in that area, I know there's one. So we could move that to that area, and we could run it for a while. Normal, and correct me, Chief, normal, we would put that up, we would get stats to find out what's going on, then we might take them down, and then we might do enforcement if there's an issue. Then we might put little black boxes up that are not going to tell you anything whatsoever, and then it tells us if we corrected anything, right?
Perfect.
And if we didn't correct anything, the chief would then come up with another strategy and say, "Hey, this is how we're going to do enforcement in that area." And what you're describing is the same morning people coming and the same evening people leaving.
I, I was leaving it pretty, pretty generic.
No, but I mean, it is, it's...
But I wouldn't disagree with your assessment.
I don't think there's anyone in the room that doesn't realize that's what it is. And Joe will tell you, this is not a, this is not the first time that issue, it surfaces for a while. We've had multiple residents say, "Officers, you can park in my driveway, do not care."
Yep.
"Use my driveway, whatever it takes, but we've got to slow them down, so..."
And I remind you that the police officer that's been doing the radar now by my house told me that he called one at 72 and then another one at 78.
I can believe that.
On Dudley.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know that I've seen that personally, but I've definitely seen north of 50 come over the top of that hill. And again, we've lived there for 15 years, and I'm used to it, I'm white-knuckled, I drive a big, big vehicle, and if people want to get aggressive, good luck, you know? But when I'm teaching a 15-and-a-half, 16-year-old to drive, like, we'll sit there for 10 minutes, and you're sitting, well, I'm like, nope, you know?
Get your speed up to 30, and then you got someone running on you.
They're like, "All right, I'm good," and then they look and there's no one, and then they look again, all of a sudden, I'm like, "Nope," and they're like, "What, Dan?" And I'm like, you know, so...
You're not coming out of Spurty.
Yeah, it really is. So again, you know, wisdom on my part, maybe, I don't know, but it came up and I thought I heard it.
It creeps up very often, especially in that area.
Yeah, and, and we can add enforcement action on top of any of these other analytical tools that we have available.
You can do a rideaway if you want.
And we, we almost continuously have one of our traffic enforcement requests in the city, Dudley, somewhere in the area of Prestwick.
Yeah.
Towards winding trails. And I know at least for sure Sergeant Buchanan regularly runs traffic in that area and makes a couple of traffic stops a week on that, so I will definitely make that request and make sure that our officers know.
We appreciate it, and we see it, too. It's just, it can't be everywhere all the time, and at least if there's something flashing saying, "Yo," you know, "Calm down," hopefully those layers of it will eventually get people to calm down a little bit. But it, it is usually the edge hours of trying to get to a certain place in a certain time or...
All right.
And quite honestly, if I worked at a local hospital, there's not a world that I would go Dudley to get on unless I lived on that side of Dudley. Even if I lived in Independence, I'd be going down Horse Branch because it's all right turns. And so I don't get it anyway, but, but anyway, appreciate the dialogue and the support.
We'll get it. I think enforcement, I, what we've seen is word gets around to the other employees that, "Hey, you better slow down, I got a ticket there, I got a ticket there, I got a ticket," and then it calms for six months to a year, and then it just sparks back up again, and...
Yep.
And we have to run it again, so, but we'll put the signs up to kind of hit that area.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
I'm thinking about, I'm wondering if there are signs that tell you, this gets, so my wife picks up on things very similar to what you pick up on, she's like, "It was really nice that the sign told me I was doing 40, but it never anywhere in the whole amount of time told me what speed I should be going. So I'll, I'll go that area and make sure there are signs that are telling people what the speed limit is so they can't say, "Well, I didn't know, I thought it was 40, I don't know what the speed limit is." So I'll check that as well to make sure we have proper signage.
Was definitely not 78.
No, it is not that. It's not that. And the, and the one that we have mounted there that stays all the time, that was because that little turn, for some reason, people kept driving over there by Mr. Seamers and running over into the yard and tearing stuff up for, we don't know why. So we tried to put something there to say, "Hey, you might want to slow down here because you're getting ready to go around some little slight bend," so...
And that's also, I mean, that's where the road tends to open up, so I get it, that's where, you know, others, not me, but others tend to, their headlights tend to disappear when they're behind me. And, and when I pull out, like, I go 30 or less.
Right.
On purpose.
Right, because you're like, "Yep, you're going to run up on me like that."
So if anybody wants entertainment, just sit out there and you'll see me with 15 cars behind me. Because at some point, they're going to figure it out.
I was passed going down Dudley Hill once.
You were passed going down the hill?
On a Sunday morning, going down the hill.
Sorry about that, Ben, that might have been, I'm kidding.
In this moment of thought, we're like, "I could go a little faster."
Because you were driving one of your old cars, and someone went, "I'm not driving by my old car, kid, go fast enough," and went around.
And Kerry was passed on Thomas More Parkway yesterday.
Oh, that's...
It's crazy. It's crazy.
Yeah.
Chief Krines will look into it, and Brian will look into it, talk to him, and we'll get some reports back.
Rick will work on getting some signs, move them in that, working.
Appreciate it.
We'll get them down there. And then we'll look at, will you look at the speed limit, just to make sure it is posted, what the speed limit's supposed to be in that area?
35.
Well, I, I agree with you, but I don't want someone complaining to me saying, "Well, there was no posted speed limit."
Well, it's...
I'm thinking about driving through, I'm thinking in my head, driving through there, and I don't remember the sign.
You don't, you don't have one, you don't have a speed sign between the hill, winding trails, and the flashing light, no.
Yeah, so we might need to put something just in that area.
There's no, there's no...
Jog their mind to go, you saw the sign, you were going 45, here's your ticket.
Because, no, there's no, there's no sign, there's no speed sign there.
Yeah.
Only, only it reflects on the, on the digital sign.
It can help.
So, yeah.
That, I, I was going to say something before you sat back down, because it's new, but we had a question involving the camera systems that we put up, and they're in different areas. Maybe just give council an update that they are up except for the one, and then kind of just a general overview of how we're going to utilize those cameras or how they're being utilized already.
Yeah, so three of our four license plate readers were installed this past week. They were installed at Dudley and Turkeyfoot, Dudley and 17, and Thomas More Parkway at Horse Branch, all coming into the city, so we're getting inbound traffic. They do have cameras on the opposite sides of them as well. We're not getting license plate readings on the way out of the city, but we do have some video in case we have an event that occurs where we know we have a video, a vehicle that's involved in a crime leaving, we can at least get a description of that vehicle. The fourth camera that we're going to put up is going to hopefully go at Meadowlark and Turkeyfoot. That's in the state's right of way, we've applied for a permit, we're waiting to hear back from them before that one gets installed. These cameras are typically used for two main purposes. One is investigative. We've had, I think, three, three stolen vehicles in the city in the last 12 months. We've had eight hit-and-runs accidents in the last two months in the city, so these can be used to obtain vehicle descriptions, potential license plates of run vehicles, stolen vehicles. And the, they also work with our dispatch center, so anytime we have a vehicle that is involved in a felony or is reported stolen, or we have a person who has an arrest warrant or might be entered as a missing person, if that's attached to the license plate, then that'll send what we call a hit to dispatch, and also to our officers, they'll receive a notification directly, and then we can use that to try and locate the vehicle, whether it be a stolen vehicle, whether it be a wanted person, anything like that. And, and so those are, those are what we use them for, I believe. Just as a, for instance, today, I think they had a hit on a vehicle in Fort Mitchell that was involved in a homicide in Knoxville, Tennessee, and they were able to locate that vehicle and secure that and hold it as evidence for the police department down there. So those kinds of instances do occur somewhat regularly. We will have some analytical data that we're going to be able to pull from over time to be able to see how many, how many hits we're getting, how many investigations we're able to solve using the data that comes through.
And they're connected to a network of cameras that are already being used in Northern Kentucky and other communities as well, right?
Correct. That's why we chose to go with the Flock system is because they, almost every police department in our area that's using the LPRs are using that system, and, and the network is the value with that system.
So can I make a comment? There's been a lot of social media postings, and I, for one, am a fan of the system. I understand the value of it, it's been explained to me by you and by other people. There are concerns by people, and I believe they're unfounded, but I just want some confirmation. These are not going to be used to write traffic tickets, correct?
Absolutely not.
There's no possible way for them to be to measure speed?
Nope.
You, these won't be, because someone even made the comment, "Oh, they're going to try and catch you running traffic lights."
No.
This is, this is purely investigative, right?
Yeah, it is all essentially reactionary, not proactive.
Yep.
So we're, we're using it after the fact, we're not actively monitoring the system to enforce traffic.
And they're not a...
We can't do that unless we actually observe the traffic infraction ourselves, anyway.
Right, as the area gets on.
Correct.
They're not like a city CCTV where you could capture faces or anything like that?
No, and, and when you review the images that are coming from the cameras, I will say the vast majority, I don't want to throw a percentage on it because I don't know for sure, but the vast majority are taken from the rear of the vehicle because most places, that's where the...
Plate is.
The plate is. So you can't, you can't generally get a description of the people that are inside of the vehicle at the time, anyway. The only caveat to that would be is if you had an Ohio plate coming and somehow the camera picked up the front plate coming in the opposite direction in some way.
And when there is a plate that gets flagged, is that like a, a notification to someone on duty or does it go to dispatch? Like, how, how are you all alerted?
It can be both. It, it will definitely go to dispatch.
Okay.
And then depending on how you have the system settings set up, it can also send a text message to the police officers, send an email to the police officers that are in our, that are on our department's network and notify them, "Hey, we just had a vehicle drive at Dudley and Turkeyfoot that hit for a stolen plate." And then they can respond to that area and, and try and attempt to locate that vehicle.
Yeah, that's correct. I mean, you think about something like an Amber Alert, something like that, you know, that is the absolute perfect use case of, we're looking for, you know, 10-4-9er, and boom, it flags, and like you said, you've got a little bit of a net of, well, it was at Fort Mitchell, now it's in Edgewood, and, you know, people can find it really quick. So, yeah, I think within minutes of it going up, there was a social media fanfare, so it was quite entertaining, the conspiracy theorists to read, so appreciate that.
The interesting part about the... The interesting part about that is, is because they're debated in communities like Nashville, Tennessee, and some other larger communities, because they believe they're being used to track down people. And the true reality is, for the ones who are posting, we've had cameras on intersections for five years now that we can pull up and see a vehicle going through it. And sometimes we can get a license plate off of it, but we have a description of a, of a vehicle, a Honda Civic, silver Honda Civic. The chief can go through and start looking at cameras to see if he can find which direction they went, and maybe pull a license plate off of it if we can to do it. And they've been in place for five years, and nobody's commented at all to them. But Flock is one of those, on a national basis, there are some communities, I know in Oregon, there's a lawsuit right now that it's violation of civil liberties, and some other places. But in our state, you can't write tickets unless you witnessed the, as well. So it's not being used for that. And we're not picking up the picture of someone sitting in it and saying, hey, that person is so-and-so attractive now. It's just finding the license plate and running it, so.
And for what it's worth, if, if you weren't aware, Flock does offer a service, which they call a Neighborhood Safe List. So if you live in a community that has these cameras, you can log into Flock's website, enter your information, say, I'm a resident, and, and basically they will ignore the data from your vehicle that comes through as a regular traveler in front of those cameras kind of thing.
Right. I did read that today. You can actually, you know, you can put in to say, I don't want my vehicle tracked. And if you're worried that you're going to get a ticket because you ran the light, guess what?
You might get hit.
Don't run the light.
That's right.
Don't go 72 mile an hour down Dudley and you couldn't get a ticket. But if we had a camera that picked you up going 72, we ought to send you a ticket.
There's a consequence.
Sorry, that was a political statement. I shouldn't say that. I feel that way for the police, that there's a good way not to get a ticket.
Can we publish that information so that people can go with?
I, I can track down the link and we can share it.
Yeah, I didn't, I went through their site, their website. They, I couldn't remember if they had some things in there about how they are constitutional, and this is what they use. But we could put a link on and just update and say, hey, community update, we're using this system now and all that stuff.
Even, even if people look, look at that site, just to get the information that we're getting, you know, to learn about it and say, oh, yeah, it's a big deal.
Yeah. So, okay. Because we will push at some point in time to ask like if Krogers would participate, because like Crestview Town Center, that they have the same cameras in their lots tracking right now. And we would ask if Krogers would do the same and pay for them to get put into the lot to let us run vehicles as well. So we'll, we'll continue, unless you all make a policy that we don't want to do that, but we would push for those things to have a Krogers, a S.A.D., and all of them to have cameras within the system, so.
I mean, right now, I don't see a downside, but you never know what like.
You know.
Yeah. And the plan, at least when we discussed it, was we, we are using these four cameras initially. I think it's a three-year agreement. At the end of that three years, we're going to look at the data, and we're going to say, have we solved any cases? Have we, you know, caught any vehicles? Have we arrested any suspects as a result of these? And, and if it's not producing solutions the way that we think it should be, we don't have to continue it.
Do you have to be a registered, or whatever you might call it, licensed law enforcement agency to be able to?
We only share our data. So we, our, the police department actually owns the data that's produced by our cameras. We can share that with other police departments, which we do. Much of that data is CEGIS-protected. I can't remember what the acronym stands for, but it's basically Criminal Justice Information, and it can only be shared with other law enforcement agencies. And the data's encrypted as soon as it goes to the cloud, the, anything that's got any kind of personal identifying information, specific license plates, things like that. And then it's wiped after 30 days, so.
Okay. Because there are stories out there that Flock cameras, somebody gets on them because they're trying to track whether their husband is, where they're traveling because they're trying to get divorced, and it's like, that, that's not true. You can't, I can't get on, I can't register and get on to see the data, or it's only law enforcement agencies that are going and, and using the data, so. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you very much for the update as well. Tonight, we do have a municipal order, 2025-09, which is surplus of various PD items. I think you've seen the, the list of items that are presented. I have one question, Chief Krynis. How, how are we going to, how do you sell all those pants and other pieces of equipment that really is, doesn't look like it's of any value?
The items that are law enforcement specific, like uniform shirts with patches on them and things like that, I don't think we can sell them. They're more likely, I think, probably going to be set for destruction, and we should destroy them. And the other stuff, that, that, the equipment that's been removed from vehicles and things like that, we can try to, to get whatever value might be available for them. Most of this stuff has been sitting in our lower-level Sallyboard accumulating for the better part of the 15 years that I've been here. And, and it's just taking up so much room down there, we, we don't have anything, we don't have any place to put it anymore, so.
Scott could build, bid on the stand-up traffic light.
He wasn't feeling it.
I, I'm more entertained at who's going to be the first to put on social media, like TikTok, vintage Fatal Experience t-shirts, quantity of 100, and see how much money we could get for selling those.
Well, it's, it's kind of, it's going to be interesting, but, you know, we're going to, we're going to approve your, your disposal over here in just a minute. So I ask for first and a second on that one.
In the chief's defense, he did have a column in there for destruction that I was just trying to keep everything on one page, so I hate it. But there, he did list like how to.
Somehow it would be destruction.
You know, what would go to Gov. Deals for auction and what we would just dispose of. So, in his defense, he did list that.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve municipal order 2025-09.
I'll second.
Doctor, Jamie. Call the roll, please.
Dr. Spilly?
Yes.
Mr. Rule?
Yes.
Mr. Barledge?
Yes.
Mr. Messmer?
Yes.
Mr. Shriver?
Yes.
Mrs. Spears?
Yes.
Mr. Thielen?
Yes.
Municipal order 2025-09 on the surplus of various items passes, and good luck, and we'll see where we're.
You know there's going to be a soft men softball league next year, wearing those t-shirts.
That's right, yeah.
Those are uniforms.
Oh, gosh. I'm, my money's on sand volleyball.
Sand volleyball, there you go.
We have up and coming events here. The letters to Santa can be dropped off at the Santa mailbox in the lobby between now and December the 5th. So December the 5th is coming closer than you think, but at the same time, we certainly wish everybody that, if they would like to drop off their wish list to Santa, you've got until December the 5th to do so, and it's in the main lobby. You don't even have to see anybody, just drop it in. We do ask that you put your email on it, or some way that we can have Santa get back to you and, and give you some recommendations and some ideas. But we do need the emails and a way to contact you afterwards. The holiday ornament painting class is open to all ages, and that's November the 23rd at noon at Liberty Hall. Must be registered because of the, of all the supplies that have to be purchased and, and have to be put, put out. And it's a $15 registration fee for that on the, on the painting. It's been a very good, successful little, little class that we have, and from standpoint, that's, it again, be on November the 23rd, and that's from, at noon at Liberty, at Liberty Hall. And it's a $15 fee. Property taxes are due December the 31st. If you want to take advantage of the 2% discount that we have, you've got until November the 26th to do that. So short time, it's running out a little bit. We're doing extremely well on, in payments at the present time, but again, you got until the 26th of November to take advantage of, of the 2% discount. The annual tree lighting, again, this year is going to be November the 30th, and that's at Liberty Hall. And as it starts at 5:30, and we'll have certainly the children throw the sparkle to light the Christmas tree, and then have hot chocolate, maybe, and some cookies that we'll have as well. But that's on November the 30th for the tree lighting. So with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Dr. Spilly? Oh, oh, yes. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. The, the next meeting is, is scheduled for December the 1st. And, but we have Thanksgiving is a Friday, is a Thursday and Friday. We're going to have nobody here, basically, to set up any things that we have for, for an agenda. And we'd like to consider maybe canceling that if, if we, if you would like to. If you think this should be, should be, we'll, we'll do it. But at the same time, we don't have anything really pressing for that, because that will be the next meeting that we have. The awards and things, we'll go ahead and we'll put those out on the 15th of, of December, when, when we meet for December. So if everybody's in concurrence with that, we'll consider canceling that meeting for December the 1st. Something urgently comes up, we'll pluck it in for the 1st, but otherwise we'll consider it closed. Thank you very much for reminding me of that. With that, everybody, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
And Dr. Spilly? Did you hear somebody?
Second.
Second by Rob. All in favor?
Aye.
All those light signs? Good night. Before you all run away, December the 17th, here at the city building, we're having a luncheon, and that's the Christmas luncheon. So if you would like to come and join us on the 17th at noon, all the employees are, are going to, we're going to shut the place down for an hour and have our Christmas luncheon here at the city building. So mark that on your calendar if you will.